Welcome to the Social Workers Radio Talk Show on W C D B Albany, 90.9 FM, with co-host Dr. Eric Hardeman and Alyssa Lotmore. Here at the Social Workers, we address issues important to our communities with social work students, alumni, and community partners as our guests.
As part of the University at Albany School of Social Welfare, we hope to take social work beyond the classroom and agency settings and directly to the public, because the public is the client. Catch us on air, online, and anytime.
And welcome to W C D B Albany. My name is Eric, and we're here with Alyssa Lotmore with the Social Workers here on W C D B Albany. Welcome back, Alyssa.
Hey, Eric, it's wonderful to be back. We've had some great shows this semester so far. I can't believe it's already October, fall in Albany.
Yeah, there's, there's been a lot going on this year, and it's gone quickly. We've had some great shows. We've got some great shows coming up. It's always a pleasure. We, and we're also in a year where in just a few weeks, we've got an election coming up. And it's, you know, it's, it's time for folks to think about public office and electing elections and, you know, getting out and voting. And, and it's, it's hard to believe we're actually almost in early November.
I know when I think about fall in Albany, it's like the leaves are changing color, but it's also land of the lawn signs. I have several lawn signs on my lawn right now.
Everywhere, yeah.
But it's being in the capital of New York. I, one thing about Albany, it's, it's a political area. It's definitely something where politics is on the mind of people sometimes a little bit more than other areas, because we are in the capital, the, the helm of the New York State government. And it's exciting, too. It's exciting for social workers especially, because I feel like we are going to be at the table a little bit more. There's more and more social workers who are in office as elected positions. We're going to be talking to one of them today. It will be Megan Keegan of the Albany Common Council. But we have several alums. I mean, I just was talking to another individual who was an alum, who was recognized by Assembly Member Manny De Los Santos, who was elected as well. So there's just a lot of connections where social workers are being more and more involved in politics, and it's exciting.
It is great. It's, you know, it's something that, you know, years ago, you didn't really hear much about social workers getting involved with politics and getting involved in political opportunities. And so, so it's great, you know, and I think it's going to be a good conversation. I'm looking forward to hearing about it. And, and, and hopefully we'll have some really great conversation that happens and that really kind of gets us thinking differently about social work opportunities and what people can do outside of sort of traditional standard social work practice, but looking differently.
No, I agree. So like I said, our guest today is Megan Keegan, as an elected official for the Albany Common Council, the Ninth Ward, and we'll bring her in. So Megan, Megan holds a master's degree from the School of Social Welfare right here at the University at Albany. She's a 2006 grad. She spent the first 15 years of her career working with special victims, at-risk youth, and individuals with disabilities in the nonprofit community-based sector and in state government. That included 10 years of government oversight work, holding publicly funded programs accountable, and seven years as a civilian investigator, working alongside law enforcement on special victims cases throughout New York State. Megan was a leader in the organized labor community and currently works for organized labor. Since 2015, Megan has volunteered with the national nonprofit organization, the New Leaders Council, working to develop leadership capacity among young progressives with a focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. There, she helped build the Capital District New York chapter, serving as chapter director and institute chair, served for two years on the National Programs Committee, and served as the National Policy Lead for the Women's Caucus. Here in the city of Albany, Megan helped to launch the first volunteer income tax assistance program, served on the Albany High School Community Engagement Team, and has been directly involved in various community efforts surrounding issues of gun violence, food insecurity, access to affordable childcare and housing, and home ownership. Megan currently lives with her husband and two rescue dogs in the city of Albany. Welcome, Megan.
Hey, guys, how you doing today?
Thank you so much for being on the show today. It's really great to have a social worker who is involved in the policy, who is at the table with our political elected officials, because you are one. And that's not something that I think a lot of social work students, when they're coming to the program, even think is something that is an option at times, to be an elected official as a social worker. So I'm really excited to have you on and talk about this.
Yeah, welcome to the Social Workers, Megan.
Thank you, guys, for having me today. I'm, I'm super excited to be able to talk about both social work in real practice and also how social workers can be really effective at, at changing structures.
Now, before we jump into how you got to where you are today, I'd like to take a step back, because you are an alum of the program. And just how did you get involved in social work? What was sort of the background as to why you came to the University at Albany?
So I started out as, I guess I, I, I always kind of envisioned being in a career that's, that involved serving others. I think my original plan had been to go into art therapy. And it's funny, because I think most people, when they see me, I, you know, I'm a white woman. I grew up in the suburbs. There, there are a lot of assumptions about what my life experience may have been. And, and that would be somewhat true up until about the time I turned nine. Both my parents work in Health and Human Services. My dad is also a social worker and also an alumni of University of Albany. I think he graduated in 1979, actually, the year I was born.
Wow, that's great.
And when I was nine, my parents became foster parents. This was during the height of the crack epidemic in New York City. And you can hear my rescue dogs in the background, I apologize. And, you know, the early stages of HIV/AIDS, when people were really uncertain about how that disease was contracted, person to person. And so my, my middle brother, my adopted brother, was actually born in the South Bronx to, to teenage parents who were incarcerated. And he was high-risk for HIV, status unknown. And because there were no available options in New York City at that time for placement, he was placed up here in the city of Albany. And I think that experience really changed my entire perspective on the world. Because I had to really think about all the things that, that, you know, sort of brought him to our home, and how unfair that was to his parents, how unfair that was to him. And throughout my teens and sort of early twenties, I was very much an activist that was interested in social justice and interested in changing the sort of systems of institutional racism that resulted in his lived life experience. And so I was an activist. And at some point, my dad, you know, sat me down for a come-to-Jesus moment and was like, you know, you, you could actually, instead of working like 5,000 jobs and, and doing all this volunteer work, like you, you could actually make a career out of this. And, and that's how I wound up applying for the Masters in Social Welfare Program and, and becoming a social worker.
Interesting pathway into the profession. Thanks for sharing that, Megan.
Now, how did you, we're going to transition a little bit. So you were always involved in that advocacy piece, based on your, your history, your, your life growing up. So you have that background after you went to the School of Social Welfare in both that clinical type of work, which a lot of students come for, but also that macro policy change. And how does that relate to eventually running for office, I guess? How does that background where those experiences that you shared as a child to wanting to be active and involved and make change, how did that lead you to an elected official position?
So again, U Albany is, their, their graduate program is actually really well-known for macro practice. It's one of the top macro schools in the country. And I was a macro track student. So I always kind of wanted to go into policymaking. I, you know, spent my, my field placements, I was with United Way doing community organizing work, which then turned into a job. That's how I got into like the volunteer, the launch of the volunteer income tax assistance programs throughout the capital region and specifically here in the city of Albany, because that was just starting to roll out. I don't, I don't know if you guys remember, but when we created the Earned Income Tax Assistance Program, which is how we sort of switched from cash welfare into this new system where people essentially receive their cash welfare in exchange for working. That's what EITC is. There was a lot of predatory lending involved in that system, which is why the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program started. So there was a lot of financial predation on really low-income people in exchange for these earned income tax credits. Anyway, I did a lot of grant writing, and it just happened to be that the, the work or the job that I got upon graduation was actually doing much more micro-practice. It was working as a program coordinator for Vander Heiden Hall. I did a lot of macro work while I was there. I, I became a therapeutic crisis intervention trainer. I did a lot of work on all of their policies for emergency preparedness and behavior management. I served on their incident response team. But I also oversaw their children's mental health residential program. And I actually got to work with my dad for a year while I was there, which was really interesting.
Yeah.
We, we got to be peers for a while during our, our careers. And, you know, from there, I, I went on to, to work in state government. But I was always very politically active. So I always kind of had this separate life where I was helping people run for office and serving on the Democratic Committee and, and still really heavily engaged in community-based activism. So I, there was no kind of, all of a sudden, I'm going to decide to run for office. I think most people who, who have known me over the last 20 or 25 years felt that, that, that was going to be inevitable. I just, I hadn't gotten to a place in life where all the pieces worked until my race in 2021.
Well, that's a really good background on that. So do you feel that the, the macro program prepared you? Or, I mean, I, sometimes we have students who are more in the clinical track that start to develop that itch for macro-type practice and work after they graduate. And I guess my, my question is, because I know sometimes students ask me, when, you know, I'm an academic advisor as well, and they say, well, I have to pick a track. Like, which one do I pick? I don't really know which one I want to do. Do you feel that if they did, students didn't do that macro track as a social worker, you can still have that policy background and be able to, be able to get to kind of where you are in a similar way with a clinical background?
I think it depends on your learning style. I am very much a, I learn by doing. I don't really learn in a, in a classroom. So even though I went into a very sort of clinical role, so to speak, immediately upon, you know, graduation, I was able to do the, the research, and I had enough foundational knowledge from my master's program to be able to do clinical really well. You know, I would say within my first 12 months, I had a really, really good understanding of mental health issues and, and presentation and symptomology, and how to communicate with psychiatrists around medication management and how to build comprehensive treatment plans in order to effectively move somebody from a, a point at which they're really not functioning well to a point where they can essentially be in the community and, and no longer be having, you know, interfaces with, you know, behavioral health emergency folks multiple times a week or multiple times a month. And I think the same can be true for the policy side. If you go into micro-practice, no matter what, you're going to have to understand sort of the regulatory framework in which you have to operate, you know? Most of your graduates are, are going to be ultimately, or those who are going into micro-practice, I mean, very few of, of graduating students are going to have clients that are solely paying out of pocket or, or dealing with private insurance. So you folks are by and large going to be working under Medicaid rules, which are dictated by both state regulation and federal regulation. And so there's a whole policy framework about how you deliver services, how you get paid for services, all the various things that you have to provide. Those things are going to create barriers for the people that you're trying to support and provide assistance to, that you're going to have to advocate for. And that advocacy is, is not going to just be at an agency level or an individual level. It has to be at a, a much larger level, in many cases, for, for folks to get from where they are when they're in crisis seeing you to where they need to go in order to be whole people again.
Sure. I mean, it sounds like, Megan, your, your experience is professionally to date, your career to date, really sort of embodies this idea of integration and, and, you know, having multiple perspectives, even going back to your, you know, teenage years, as you said, sort of as an early social justice advocate and activist almost, that all of your experiences kind of argue for that integration of micro and macro perspectives, that, that the two are, are in fact not really separate, but they're, you know, they're, it's possible to integrate the two.
Absolutely. I mean, I know back in the early days of social work in the United States, you know, there was that whole debate between Mary Richmond and Jane Adams. And I think both of them were, were, were right. I mean, you, you can work on a systems level in order to change the system, but you're still going to have folks who are downstream, who need somebody who's going to partner with them and help them on that journey. You know, both things need to be happening sort of at the same time in, in order to effectively support people who need help. And that's what social workers do, whether they're working at the macro level or whether they're looking, working at the micro level.
So Megan, I just was curious, what you were saying that you eventually wanted to get more involved in politics. It was sort of your calling. Why the Common Council? What was it about that position that attracted you? You know, there's some people do Library Board of Trustees or other types of positions or School Board. What was it about the Common Council that was the, sort of your calling to that?
I think for, for anyone, and this sort of gets to some of the questions that we had, we had talked about before the show. But I think for anybody who's ever interested in running for office, you know, there are your folks who kind of like ran out the gate, running for Congress, and, and that's just not, that's not the typical pathway for, for most elected officials. And unless you have a lot, a lot of money to spend that is your own money, it's highly unlikely that, that you're going to get into politics through that avenue. And so most people who, who go into, to being public servants in an elected official capacity typically start their careers in local office. And you're right, I mean, School Board and Library Board are, are great places to start. It gives you an opportunity to have a lot of experience dealing with big budgets and having to make really difficult decisions about how you're going to allocate programs and services with limited resources. And with regards to the Common Council, I mean, I was, when, when Jim Sano, who was the councilperson before Judy Doche, who, who was my predecessor, retired, I was working in state government. I worked for the executive branch, and I was hatched at the time. And he decided very much at the last minute that he was not going to run after he had filed his petitions. And so it kind of created a little bit of chaos for who was going to take over in the ninth. And at that time, I was the president of the Albany County Young Dems and his neighbor. And he had called me and said, you know, I'm not, I, I'm going to decline my nomination. I, I think that you should go for this. And I was like, I'm not really in a position to do this. I'd literally have to quit my job tomorrow because I'm hatched. And, you know, I, I'm just not in a position where I can do that. But I knew, in speaking with Judy, that she was going to not run again. And I knew enough in advance that I was able to kind of find work in the private sector, which would allow me the opportunity to be able to run for that seat. And more often than not, your opportunities to run are, are come up when there is a vacancy. It's highly unlikely, especially in an area like Albany, that you're going to primary an incumbent and win. And so I would say, you know, I love Albany. I love local government. I think everything, all politics are local. But my decision to run in, in 2021 was really based upon the fact that there was going to be a vacancy on the council. And, you know, if I was going to get myself elected, this was probably going to be one of the, the best opportunities I was going to have over the next few years.
So what about, you know, I'm, I'm curious to approach it from a different angle. What, why do you think, you know, we don't see as many social workers in elected office, you know, as we might see? I mean, I think those of us who are in social work know that it's a, you know, a very diverse, powerful, impactful career that can take lots of different shapes and forms. But a lot of social workers don't necessarily consider elected office or going into politics more broadly as an option. And I'm, I'm wondering if you have any thoughts on why that might be the case?
Well, I will say, having, having done a lot of campaign work, social workers to me are oftentimes, don't have the, the personality type that most elected officials have. I mean, most people who run for office, you know, are not necessarily just altruistic and looking to serve their community. I mean, that was definitely the impetus behind my decision to run. You know, I really felt in this particular phase that there was not a really good person to take over who understood how government worked and, and was going to be able to get good policy done on behalf of the city. And I had spent a lot of time getting good folks elected into city government to sort of shift away from a Democratic machine into sort of an independent legislative body that, you know, was going to act as a check and balance to the mayor and, and start to work towards moving the city of Albany to a much more progressive city and, and start to dismantle some of the institutional racism that existed in the city of Albany. But social workers by and large are typically very altruistic people who are not really interested in power for themselves. And no matter what party structure you go into, those personalities exist. And you, you have to, you have to, to be somewhat self-centered in order to really sell yourself to the people and say, I'm this amazing person. And I think a lot of social workers don't necessarily have that in their personality, surely by what they're deciding to do as a career. I mean, nobody goes into this career because they're, you know, going to achieve power and control over others and be in charge of everything and make a lot of money, you know?
So I think that is, that is true, because we've, we've been talking to individuals about sort of how social workers have to be the media and engage the media. We have to be out there more, you know, because our show is all about having social workers have like another opportunity to have a voice to the larger audience, to be able to share their message. And a lot of times, getting people on the show, they're uncomfortable because they feel like they have to talk more in a different way, because they're sort of selling themselves about maybe a new book that they're writing or stepping out of their comfort zones to not just serve the, like, the individuals and work with their clients. They're now sort of out there as their own person and having to shift that mindset of, like you said, kind of being a little bit self-centered and talking about themselves in a different way. And it made a lot of people, sometimes it made people uncomfortable to have to, have to do that.
I think the other piece in sort of the elephant in the room is that social work is still a very female-dominated field. That has changed, and, and we're seeing more and more men come on. But the fact of the matter is, is women aren't likely to just run. Women need to be asked. It's sort of how we're conditioned, I think, from a very early age. We don't strive for leadership, but we will take on leadership and do it very well if we're encouraged to do so. You know, and I think that's very true for myself. I mean, I don't know that I would have necessarily stepped out of my comfort zone of, of being sort of the behind-the-scenes campaign guru that was helping out all these other amazing candidates all across the capital region for the last 15 years or so. Had people not said to me over and over and over again, when are you going to run?
Right.
You know? And it was very hard. It was a struggle to, to put myself out there and, and to, to go door to door and say, I have this absolutely amazing resume, you know? And, you know, of all the choices that you possibly could make in this election year, these are the reasons why you should vote for me. That's, that's, I think, hard for most people. I think it would be very difficult for most social workers, but it's incredibly difficult for women to do that.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's, it's great that you've done it and, and that you are sort of paving the way for future women, too, that, you know, I think a lot of it is opportunity, but a lot of it also is just seeing that visibility and seeing role models out there. And, and especially as younger women come up through, you know, through the educational process and, and into new careers, you know, seeing the visibility of public officials like yourself, I think, is incredibly important. So it's great that you've done that.
It is really important, too. I mean, even growing up, I grew up in the city of Albany. I was a summer youth employee for several years, and I was placed at City Hall. That's where I was working for my whole time as a summer youth employee. And I would have to go down and work in the mayor's office at times. I was at Jerry Jennings at the time, or the deputy mayor's office. And I would help out. I would be like an assistant at times. And it's definitely can be, when you don't see a lot of women at the table, and it's sort of a, a man's world in times, in times at politics, it's great to have a woman, and for individuals and young women like myself at the time, who is growing up, but working in, in or at city government, to be able to see people like me at the table, making decisions, having conversations. And it can do a lot for a lot of the, the youth in Albany when women are in those positions and as an equal at the table.
So Megan, Megan, I'm curious, you know, I, I think it's a really good point, Alyssa. I, I'm curious, Megan, if you, you know, think about social workers that might do other types of, you know, publicly engaged activities other than... publicly engaged activities other than elected office. What, what are some of the ways, you know, aside from running for office that social workers might get involved or that, that you can see as opportunities for them?
So I, I think um, one of the most interesting ways um, that social workers can be really effective in serving the, you know, because as you know, social worker, social work is very broad. Um, there are many, many different um, avenues of expertise that you can take, particularly if you're going into micro practice in terms of the, the populations that you might be serving. Um, and as I think we, we talked about earlier, no matter what, you're going to find that there are barriers um, in place, systemic barriers in place that prohibit those folks from really achieving full and true independence in, in society. And I am always a fan of teaching people um, how to fish, you know? Um, I think it's disingenuous as a social worker to um, sort of entrap people in a dependency model where they're, they're constantly dependent upon you for meeting their needs. Um, and so I think getting into community organizing and, and learning a bit about how that works and tying that into um, lobbying is one of the most effective ways that social workers um, can impact policy.
Hmm.
Um, that is taking the folks that you're, you're serving um, and that you're trying to help helping them understand the system that's impacting the policy and what those barriers are and, and what levers need to be pulled in order um, to, to alleviate those barriers. And then actually working with them and encouraging them um, to engage with government to change those things and being sort of that backbone support in doing that. Um, you know, there is nothing more effective to a legislative body um, than having the actual people who are receiving whatever it is that the government is spending money on. You know, whether it's adaptive equipment or um, mental health treatment services or, you know, uh, access to rural healthcare.
Sure.
You know, if those folks are coming to their legislator, legislative bodies and they're coming to their political leaders and saying, you know, here's this particular um, piece of legislation or component of of the state or the federal budget, and this is how it's going to impact me personally. And prohibit me from getting where I am today to, to somebody who's gonna be able to um, support myself or live independently or what have you. I mean, that's, that's the greatest impact you can have. People listen to that. Um, and so I think one of the most effective policy-changing tools that social workers can, can have is, is to actually learn how to lobby. Um, and really get into um, and learn about community organizing and how they can be effective organizers of the folks that they're serving.
Ooh, so I'm, I'm thinking maybe an adjunct instructor sometime in the future, a new class that you might be teaching?
We, I, I was thinking the same thing, Alyssa. Megan, I think we need to get you back to the school and inspiring our students, you know, I, I think you, you've got a real opportunity. I know you're busy and probably doing so much, but there's uh, you, there's a great opportunity to inspire our current students to, to take steps in a new direction like you did.
It's, it's funny too, because I, I, I uh, I've always said to folks, I'm like, this is my like, you know, age fifty-five and after retirement plan is I want to go back into academia and just, you know, spend time teaching. Um, because I think um, I, you know, there's so many different things that um, I've done over the course of my career that I think can be really effective um, for folks who are coming into the system. I mean, I worked in residential care, um, we were working on restraint elimination. And I managed to eliminate the use of our therapeutic hold, but I think ninety-six percent um, in under three years, which is huge.
That's great.
Um, and, and that required a, a completely, you know, sort of changeover from your traditional models of um, providing institutional care. And that work um, has impacted my view on things like our policing strategy and, and how we do de-escalation out in the community.
Right.
Um, you know, all of those things sort of tie in together. Um, and so when I talk with people and with folks about policy, I, I'm now speaking from a very kind of real world, real life. You know, this is not necessarily a subject for debate. Um, perspective, so which, which is helpful.
Sure.
When you're
Sure.
in a room with fourteen other people um, trying to get everybody to, to come to consensus on a, on a particular issue.
Yeah. Well, Megan, it's been great talking with you and you, you know, you've really done such an incredible job with uh, your career so far and just, you know, the um, uh, you know, real uh, just passion that you clearly have for the work that you're doing and the importance of the work that you're doing in the public sphere is just, it's, uh, it's really remarkable and it's great to have an alum uh, from the School of Social Welfare to talk to and, you know, uh, and really fascinating too, to hear you talk about um, the sort of intergenerational social work piece that, that your father was also a social worker. And you know, at some point, we'll have to unpack that a little bit and-
Yeah, no, we, we could probably do a whole show with me and him together.
Right, right.
Cause I, I'm sure I could get him to come on. He's still working. He's in his seventies.
Wow, that's great, yeah. But you know, it's rare. I mean, it's really, you, you know, uh, it's, and it's exciting to think about and talk about. And so let's, let's make some plans for that as well.
Yeah, so Megan, thank you so much. Like I said, it's, I was an advisor of students as well. It's really great to hear your story. But so many students ask the same thing, like, I want to be involved. I want to make change. I don't know how. What kind of track do I do? What kind of experience do I, do I get here as an, is student intern? What should my first job be? So hearing your story and that, you know, what inspired you, that timeline, that transition to you know, a student, to an employee, to someone who's considering running for office, to them being elected. It's a good way for students to see there's many different pathways and ways to be involved in our government and in our policies. And seeing you as an example is an inspiration to
Absolutely.
Individuals. I know it sounds like, oh, you know, but it is true. Having you at the table as a social worker, bringing that social work perspective, social work voice as a woman, as someone who you know, is at the table, in that office, when I was sitting there as a teenager in the, the political offices, not seeing as many women as I would like, to have you there and more women coming, it's it's really an inspiration to a lot of our students, especially, like you said, social workers, a lot of female students at the time. We are getting more males, but it's a lot of females. And having you as a social worker at the table in the political field and the political arena is really an inspiration to a lot of, a lot of students and individuals in the profession who want to make that change and want to do that too, without being asked. Who might just want to say, I want to do that. She did it. I can do it too.
Absolutely. I mean, and that's essentially what I did. I was like, okay, I'm gonna do this. And I did. Um, but yet, you know, I running for office is, is hard work, especially when you're balancing uh, full-time career and the work doesn't let up once you get elected. But I will say for all of your students that are asking like, what should I do?
Yeah.
You know, you should just do. Take the job that seems the most interesting or is going to allow you to make your student loan payments and your rent. Um, each, y- you're gonna learn something from it and it's gonna lead you to the next thing. Whatever that may be.
I like it.
I do too. Megan, thanks so much for being our guest here on The Social Workers.
Thank you so much for having me, guys.
It's been a great conversation and um, we've really enjoyed this. And uh, yeah, so thanks for being our guest. We've been talking with Megan Keegan today on The Social Workers. And we'll have you back at some point in the future. Thanks for listening to The Social Workers on WCDB Albany.